Good evening. Welcome to the January 22, 2024 City Council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Councilman Steele?
Steele.
Steele, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you please take role?
Yes. Councilmember Kalmeck.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Steele.
Here.
Mayor Protem Landau.
Here.
And Mayor Sustarsik.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items nor on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers must be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and to the entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or the audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do we have anybody for oral communications tonight? Sure, come on up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, council, for allowing these times for citizens such as myself. I've been in Seal Beach off and on since the early '60s. This is the first time I've ever spoken, been to many meetings, but I suppose it's never too late to do a little civic duty. Main concern that I have is one of the situations that has followed along for many years. This year, I brought my son up, who's never been to Seal Beach when we had high wave times, those sort of things. So I brought him here to have the opportunity to go see what big swell was and that sort of thing, because I used to surf down at the river. We went to the, go to the river, but were unable to go down because of the problems that existed. Now, this isn't the first time that I know there have been issues with the flooding and tides and everything else. What I didn't understand is, as I observed things, there was nobody, no management, nobody from the city there when all these issues were beginning and happening. I do know that there was a council member there directing traffic, making sure that dangerous situation didn't get into a worse situation. I did notice that the berm that was on the east side of town was quite large, like it always had been. I don't know of any problems that existed there, but I did notice there was barely a berm. It looked barely a berm. I'm just a layman. Looked very small to me, and I didn't know if that was the cause for the flooding or whatever. Flooding happens, it has, you know, for all of these years. The problem being is there was no, like I said, no management there, nobody organizing or taking care of a problem that existed that may not have even had to have existed. I know there were no pumps there, and I know several years back, there'd been an issue with a pump. I don't know if it was at the trailer park or if it was down here at the parking lot, maybe the same situation that happened. So here you have the flooding and then a sinkhole and all these sorts of items that happen. I know there used to be problems on the east side. They seem to not happen anymore like they used to in years past. Why is the situation occurring over there? I know that there's plenty of expenditures made and preparation to make sure that these situations don't happen. And I think I just would ask the council that when you come up to review these types of items, I believe you do it on a yearly basis, that you would bring these up to your attention and, you know, ask the questions, why? Why is there low berm? Why is there flooding? We understand high waves are going to make flooding, but we do things to protect that. Why was it not done at the west end of town? When things do blow up, and it did blow up, why wasn't it handled? Why wasn't there management there to take care of it? I think that's what taxes are paid for and everything else. It was, it was not something that, you know, I thought was handled very well. That's basically the only thing I have to bring up. I will bring up one other thing, and I don't know why it's, these things happen, you know, at the west end of town. These all were in about 15 minutes of my time here right now. There was an older woman that had gone out to see the ocean. She was from back east somewhere, I could tell by her accent and her voice. She was very distraught because she, she comes to me and says, well, what do I do? I just came here. I've got to pay this. They gave me a ticket, $64 ticket, because she'd walked down to the beach and come back. Yeah, I, I know you got to have rules and regulations, you got to pay for parking. She didn't see it. She's an older woman. I couldn't help her in taking care of that. But immediately, another man comes up to me and says, why doesn't the app work? I don't know why the app doesn't work, but these, then, I've heard that there are these problems. Again, these are things that I think from this end of town need to be addressed. I don't know if the issues extend to the other parking lots and all, and all the others. Apps, I know the city's trying to put on a good face by social, what do you call it? Social media. Whatever you do on the phones and through the internet and everything.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Sure. And I think if you're spending that, the money is and the time for the consulting, all those things, when you deal with the public, and the public does not feel welcome coming to the town, then you're defeating your whole purpose. You're spending money needlessly. Do the right job with what you have for the people that are coming now. They will advertise for you when they tell them about the good, good time they had down Seal Beach. So I just.
Your time has expired.
Would hope this is reviewed. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, city council. I'm in the same position. I was born here in 1960 and was raised in this town, spent several decades away, and have recently moved back here with my husband, Steve. I've loved this town. I loved growing up here. I get a thrill as I see these kids out here, you know, on their bikes and having the same good times that we did in this safe little community. However, on November 28, as I was taking my early morning walk around 7:00 a.m., walking down Main Street, I was assaulted with a deadly weapon by one of our homeless people who was, had spent the night on a bench. And that has become a huge concern for me. It's not fun to walk down Main Street and onto the beach properties and have people sleeping. It's not good for them. It's not good for us. And we've seen the cities around us and what's happening there. And I was very grateful that day, within about 90 seconds of my call, after I was able to jump into some man's car that happened to be down there for protection, thinking this guy was coming after me with his knife. Within 90 seconds, our officers arrived and handled the situation. And the man had thrown the knife up on top of one of the businesses there on Main Street, and hopefully, I believe they probably have retrieved that, and the man's now in jail. But every week, I look to make sure he's still in jail. It's very concerning to me. I think about what is going to happen when he's out of jail and he decides to come back to this town. Am I going to get a knife in the back? Am I going to constantly have to be worried? We have to solve this problem. This is not that difficult to solve. Now, I tried to talk to the police department about it, and I hear the same words from everyone. Our hands are tied. Our hands are tied because of this Supreme Court decision. I don't believe that our hands are tied. If we provide a place, and I'm not talking, and one of the female officers at the police department got snippy with me and suggested that I take them home to an empty room in my house, which wasn't appreciated after I told her I'd been assaulted, that's not the answer. But, and she said, then go to the city council and ask them to build a shelter. We don't need a shelter here. We don't want a shelter here. We don't want to draw more people here. But we have to, so that those police officers' hands can be untied, we have to have somewhere at nighttime for people to lay their heads, so we can simply hand them a card when they're down here preparing to sleep and say, there are beds available, you need to make your way or leave the city, and not allow this to continue. It is not safe. Someone is going to seriously get injured here. And I'm already struggling with how to deal with this. My suggestion here is, we have a police department, and I know it wasn't appreciated when I suggested this, but we clean out a room, a small room in the police department. I will pay for the cots, and we put some cots in there, and we hand out those cards. And it's open from 8:00 p.m. till 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning. All of their stuff doesn't get dragged into the police department. It can be, I understand that they have a locked thing, they could put it behind, and the people can pick up their stuff and bring a small plastic bag they're given in to spend the night there. I don't believe that most people, the people that we have sleeping on these benches are going to take you up on that offer. But at least you will have the beds. You can meet the Supreme Court's expectation and say, you cannot sleep on our streets. Seal Beach does not allow that. It won't cost. We've already paid for a building that is the best place to house people like this in case there's an incident, in case somebody loses their mind and starts to attack. You don't want to have people that donate their time. You don't want to have unarmed people. The night shift can go in and check to make sure everything's okay in that room. Like I said, I don't think you're going to get, if people know they can't bring their drugs in there and they can't bring their weapons, that's not going to be their first place. They want to be downtown where they can panhandle and they can get access to food. So we clip it and just say, it's not allowed in Seal Beach. And it'll get out straight on the word. People will recognize, we don't have homeless sleeping here.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Okay. That's all I have to say. I appreciate your time, and I hope you'll really carefully consider it before we have a disaster, because you can think that everybody's safe, everybody's not safe out there. They can turn on a dime, and apparently, they are armed. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sandy Chris, mayor and council members. I am on the Board of Directors in Surfside, Surfside Colony, and I just am here to thank you for considering our request. It's on your agenda tonight. We had excess expenditures last year in our fiscal year, last winter with our berm construction. We built our berm, and then the ocean had its way with it, and we had to build it up several times. We did have flooding, and we thank you for sending people to help us with that. And then after that, in February, we had another incident where we had to rebuild again. So we've spent over $30,000. You have all this information, I'm sure. I'm just here to be a face and appreciate that you're considering helping us out with that. We have a contract with you that we build the berm each year, and you reimburse us, and that's around $11,000, $11,500. And as I said, we spent over $30,000 last year, so we're underwater about $21,000, so to speak. I did not mean to joke about that. So I'm just here to be a face, request the amount, and we really appreciate you considering us. And already this year, we have the same, basically the same contract as last year. We've already spent almost that amount just because of the hurricane that never came, but we had to prepare for it. So, you know, it's a up in the air kind of a time, and we haven't had sand, but thank goodness, we now, the sand replenishment is underway, and we're very thankful for that. And we ended up building a berm, and thank you again. We had to build a berm because of the storm last month, and we really had to manage that or we would have had more flooding. So the Orange County Fire Authority came and built a berm for us, so thank you for helping us to arrange that. So it's really a very fluid time for us. Again, another joke. I apologize. I don't mean to be doing that. But we just are spending a lot of money trying to protect the beach and the homes and the people. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hope Horning. At last month's meeting, there was much discussion about water and sewer rate hikes that will double in just a few years. As a former federal warranted officer that signed contracts for the United States of America, I understand source and use of funds, appropriations, and allocations. So I did some research about source and use of these funds and learned that water and sewage rates are supposed to reflect the cost of providing those services to customers or ratepayers. In a well-managed city, water and sewer revenues are used to obtain water, operate and maintain and deliver and treatment systems, and fund the necessary capital projects. In particular, proactive preventive maintenance projects, which ensure safe and effective services instead of reactive emergency fixes of failing infrastructure. Water and sewage rate increases usually are necessitated when general funds begin to subsidize water and sewer operations. That is not the case with the city of Seal Beach. It's just the opposite. Water and sewer revenues are subsidizing general fund operations. Specifically, over one day a week, the salaries of the city manager, assistant city manager, and two manager analysts come from water and sewer revenue. I don't believe the citizens of Seal Beach, who conscientiously conserved water during years of drought, should be penalized for their efforts, especially when water and sewer revenue is not being used to just deliver those services, but is being used to subsidize 25% to 35% of the very largest city salaries. And I find it hard to believe that those employees in those positions really spend over one day a week or equivalent hours managing or administering water and sewer operations when we have a whole department for that. Even part of your salary as city council members is allocated is coming from water and sewer revenue. And in another matter, at almost every council meeting, Councilman Steele expresses concerns about the potential impact of a projected annual $5 million deficit over the next three years for a total of $15 million. There is a better way to address those potential deficits than on the backs of folks using water and sewer services. So I would point out an article in last week's Sun newspaper indicating, quote, "Multiple Job Openings in Seal Beach City Government," end quote. And note, the quickest way to reduce that potential deficit is to reduce personnel costs. Maybe we should consider letting those positions go unfilled until the economy turns around or we get a better projection. In conclusion, I would direct your attention to the section in the city manager's contract regarding, quote, "Annual Evaluations and Salary Review," end quote, which requires, quote, "On or before March 1 of each year, the city council shall conduct an evaluation of employees' performance," end quote. During that evaluation, the city council and employee shall mutually establish performance goals and objectives and reflect such in salary and benefits offered. Because of COVID, there has not been such an evaluation for a number of years, and that's understandable. But the time has come, and it's really past due, for you to meet your contractual obligations to your employee and conduct that evaluation. Maybe you should do exit interviews with the multiple employees who have left our city government. It is also past time to conduct that evaluation on behalf of other employees and in the interest of your constituents.
Good evening. My name is Mike Bube, president of Seal Beach, and I'm here to talk about the water rate increases. And I have to admit that this, this really sneaked up on me or snuck up on me, and it's my bad that I haven't been paying attention to this. But I would ask that the city council somehow delay or increase transparency on the, on the rate increases. And it's my understanding that to stop the rate increase of double over five years, that it takes the majority of Seal Beach residents writing a letter, a physical letter to the city to, to stop this or increase more transparency on it. I'm not sure what other mechanisms are available, but I would like to see more publicity, transparency given to this and more input. I'm, I'm somewhat informed about city politics, and I'm surprised that, that this came up in the way it did. And then, and then the, the other issue connected to this is, as the previous speaker said, that the water rate and sewer rate increases, which will also double in five years, are going to salaries for city employees. And it's my understanding that salaries come out of the general fund, and we don't fund them from other sources. So I would like you to take a look at that, and if you can, slow this down or in some way allow more citizen participation in the water rate increases and how the money is spent and where the money is going to come from for salary increases.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Darren DeLeon. I'm the treasurer of the, of the Chamber of Commerce here. Something like that. I have with me my wife, who's the GAC chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, and we have George Banker, who is our ambassador of the Chamber of Commerce. I just want to start out by presenting a couple little certificates. We appreciate everything you do as a city. We appreciate all your help and work with the members of the city and the businesses in the city, so we want to thank you for that. I have three certificates here. One is for former mayor Thomas Moore, thanking you for your service last year and all your service that you've been on the city council. Also, Mayor Kostarsik, thank you for stepping up and being our mayor, so we appreciate you there. And then Mayor Protem Landau. Ms. Landau, thank you for, for all your service. Councilman Kalmeck, Councilman Steele, thank you for your service this year, stepping up and everything you do. But we do have these three certificates from the, from the Chamber of Commerce for the three of you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Y'all know I like to talk, so hopefully I get to start over. No, it shouldn't be that long. Hi, my name is Cory DeLeon with the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce. As always, I'm here to really announce some of the things that are, really good things that are going on in the chamber, and super excited that I won't be the only face that you see. We have had a designated effort to get our board out here, and Ambassador, the Ambassador Chair, George Banker, is just one of the faces you will see. First and foremost, we want to thank our sponsors. Platinum sponsor, OPGI. Gold sponsors, Republic and Sun News. Silver sponsors, 320 Main, Beach City Realities, Boeing, F&amp;M Bank, Pavilions, Pearl Vision, and Weston. Bronze level sponsors, Nikki Albright of Aflac, Coastline Environmental Solutions, Domino's, Elderberry, Financial Partners Credit Union, Glowiki, Chiropractic, Jersey Mikes, Maury's of Seal Beach, Medex, Miller's Children's Hospital, Minuteman Transport, Optimum Employer Solutions, Diana Bean Solar Wholesale, and TYR. We could not do what we do for the community without these key sponsors. I would also like to introduce, very excited to introduce, some of our new members. We have prep cooking classes in the Rossmore Center. We have Vicky Andrews Berea. For those people that may not realize, we do take independent, people may, they may not be representing a business, but if they want to be a part of our community, we do love to have them at the Chamber. Custom Construction, Solar Wholesale Group, and if you'll remember, they, they were a bronze level sponsor. Ball Design, TYR, another bronze level sponsor, and Elizabeth, Ali Good &amp; Associates. We are officially gearing up for the car show. It's coming up so fast. Because of that, we've got the car show and the health fair coming up back to back. So if you'd like to get ahold of the Chamber, we are asking that you call the Chamber to make an appointment. We are starting to hustle and make sure that everything that needs to happen, happens. And furthermore, if you are a business in Seal Beach, we are currently collecting discounts for both Boeing and the military. We are, so much of, of who we are in Seal Beach has a lot to do with kind of that core business, Boeing, but also, we are a military town, and we do want to respect those that have so valiantly served us and is right at the base. So if you are offering a discount, we want to showcase your business. And then finally, just kind of do some upcoming events. We have Centers of Influence via Zoom, which is on Wednesday, January 24. If you don't like to get up for our 7:30 meetings on the second Thursday of the month, and, and you are more comfortable on Zoom, it's a great way to do some networking.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
See, it still takes me that long. Triumph at Thursday, February 1 at 320 Main, the Leif Gala, February 6 at 6:30. Long Beach Symphony will be honoring the Chamber, February 3. They're going to be doing something with the Stones. Shop, Eat &amp; Play, formerly the Sidewalk Sale, February 2 through the 4. Ambassador Meeting, February 6, 9:00 a.m. at the Chamber office. Lions are celebrating their 85th anniversary, February 7. Beach Cleanup, Saturdays, the 17th.
Your time has expired.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, we are working on that currently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda and waiver full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the city council, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull a consent calendar item?
I do. I'd like to pull item M.
Let's see if it's still M. Let's see. Okay, that is application for funds. Okay, we have item M pulled. Anyone else want, wish to pull an item?
I would like to pull item E.
Item E. All right. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, mayor. Six supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to the council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, and please vote on your iPads.
Hi.
Okay, that carries 5-0. Thank you. We're going to move on to city attorney report. Ms. Gurelli, city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss the three items posted on the, posted agenda on item On Item B of the closed session agenda, the City Council authorized the approval of an easement with Frontier Communications and OCTA at 3900 Lamson Avenue. That was all for the closed session. And then I did just want to report to the City Council that I currently sit on the League of Cities Legal Advocacy Committee. This is a group of city attorneys from across the state, and we had our meeting on Friday where we discussed the Grants Pass and Martin versus Boise of Idaho cases, which are the Ninth Circuit cases that people say, and I agree, tie the hands of communities to deal with the homeless crisis. And the Supreme Court has agreed to take up that case, and the Legal Advocacy Committee agreed to file an amicus brief supporting the position of Grants Pass to have that precedent overturned by the Supreme Court.
Thank you. City Manager Report. City Manager Ingram, did you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. Just have a couple calendar reminders of a couple of meetings happening between now and our next regular council meeting. Next Tuesday, January 30th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at Fire Station 48, we'll have our strategic plan meeting. And then next Thursday, February 1st, we'll have our next meeting of the Parking Ad Hoc Committee here in the council chambers at 5:30 p.m. And of course, we invite the community to come and participate and attend both of those meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Council Comments. General Council Member Comments and Reporting pursuant to AB 1234. Start with Council Member Kalmak.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to AB 1283, I did attend our Southern California Association of Governments meeting. I also attended the Orange County Council of Governments meeting and Legislative and Public Affairs Committee meeting for Orange County Fire Authority. I also attended the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy meeting, where I walked in the door and was made Vice Chair. I attended our Prop 218 Open House here at the council chambers, which a lot of folks did come, and we had the opportunity to answer questions and hopefully, you know, provide more information in terms of understanding everything that we need to, to be able to make a good decision about that. The most important meeting that I had was last Friday. We held our first meeting of the San Gabriel River Working Group. This is a coalition that we established to help to move forward a project that would eliminate the trash in the San Gabriel River. And I think this is an opportunity that is not going to be passed by. It was a very positive meeting. We had two state assembly members. We had our Orange County District 1 Supervisor. We had representatives from the City of Long Beach. We had representatives from the Surf Rider Foundation. And everyone agreed that this is something that is doable. We even have some early financial commitments that will help us get the ball rolling in terms of all of the scoping that needs to be done. We had an excellent presentation that was able to show all of us the issues regarding who owns what and who's responsible for what. Turns out that the City of Seal Beach has no jurisdiction in the river. State Lands Commission, LA County are the primary entities. We also had a representative from Supervisor Janice Hahn of the LA County Board of Supervisors at the meeting. So we will be having additional meetings, and I think it's the first time that I've felt, as optimistic as I do now, that there is a solution in the offing, that because we've found there's technology that is out there. It was always a problem for me in wanting to push something because there was nothing available that I could see that would get the job done. But now, there's a nonprofit, an international nonprofit called Ocean Cleanup, that has developed technologies, one of which is called an interceptor. And when I did a little bit more research by reading the LA Times, I found that they had a pilot project that's been operating in Biona Creek up in Marina Del Rey for over a year and has been incredibly successful. So this is one of the technologies that we're going to pursue. I know the City of Long Beach is already pursuing it for the LA River, but they are continuing to partner with us with regard to what we can do in the San Gabriel River. So stay tuned, and hopefully, we'll be able to, in our lifetime, see nothing in the river but turtles and surfers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your work on that. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank the Public Works for putting on the open house last Thursday. It was really beneficial for residents in College Park West and had a few residents from Leisure World. And thank you, Iris Lee, especially for responding to several of my residents directly, and I really appreciate you setting up meetings with them. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Steele?
Yes, I've got a list I'm going to put up on the screen here because I did a lot that I want to talk about. One specific thing when we come, I was, I went to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, which I'm going to asterisk next to that one because I want to mention something that I learned from them. Senior Citizen Advisory Committee is a county-level advisory committee to the County Board of Supervisors about issues concerning aging and disabilities and things like that. And so it's a panel of about 30 people at this stage of the game, and I was, they're about to rename it to the Office on Older American Something or Others, and I prefer senior citizen as opposed to older adults. So anyway, but that's going to happen tomorrow night. I chaired the SCAC Housing and Transportation Committee meeting last week. This particular is a subcommittee of the Senior Citizen Advisory Council. I attended the GRF President's Council meeting. I also attended the GRF Membership Committee meeting. I attended the West Orange County Water Board meeting. They are launching the engineering phase of the catheterization work that they need to do on the pipes. For those of you who care about such things, cathodes are the oddly scientific thing that allows the cathode to be destroyed by rust and not our pipes. So anytime they install, did I say that well enough? Something like that. They install these cathodes, and that attracts the corrosion. So that lets our pipes last a lot, lot longer. And so they're going to be doing this all throughout the West Orange County Water Board District, and they are starting to the design phase right now. And so that's a great thing coming down the pipe. How about that? There's a nice little pun. OCMB, Orange County Mosquito Vector, we had the board meeting last week. I will be attending the American Mosquito Association Conference in Dallas in a few weeks. I was one of a few board members that was selected to do that. Actually, I volunteered quickly, and that got me on the list. So I'm looking forward to spending four days in Dallas on their dime. They'll be paying for that, and learning everything I possibly can about mosquito abatement. So that's going to be exciting stuff, folks. I'm looking forward to that. And tomorrow, I leave for the Cal Cities Mayor's and Elected's Conference going on in Monterey. This conference is done by Cal Cities, and it's about improving myself or the position I'm holding up here as a city council member. And so I'll be off to that for the remainder of this week. I want, next slide if you can, please. This is the Senior Citizen Advisory Council Committee. Is that the slide I want? Oh, yes. The presentation they gave, I learned a lot from the Senior Citizen Advisory Council. We have presentations on veterans and veteran services. We have presentations on Alzheimer's. We have presentations on all kinds of things. And the last presentation caught my attention, and I wanted to mention it out loud and in public here because people need to know about this particular service that is done by the city. It is called the, next slide. It's called the Aging and Disability Resource Connection, and that's their telephone number right there. This is a one-door on-ramp for aging and disability services. There are somewhere in the range of 1,200 different agencies in Orange County alone that offer services to people with different kinds of disabilities, different kinds of needs, different kind of aging situations. One of the, one of the critical things going on right now is that aging, senior citizens are being made homeless by rate and rent increases around the county. And you'll find that some of these people have no idea where to go or what to do. They end up sleeping in their car for a few days. These are senior citizens who've been in their apartments for years in some cases, and the landlord increases their rents, they can't afford it, and they end up homeless. And so that's just one example of the kind of services that are available through that particular telephone number. What this number does, you can go to the next slide. What they do is they aggregate, they collect all of the information from the caller, and they keep a profile for that caller, and they tell that caller who they can call next, or they will actually call the next agency that is needed by that particular caller. The caller today, under normal circumstances, they have to figure out who they need help from. They have to call up all kinds of different agencies. It gets very, very discouraging, and people just frankly give up. This is called the one-door policy. You make one call to that one number, they will take your profile and all your information, and then they will spread it out to all of the agencies who can help that particular individual, and then those agencies will call that individual back. So it's a great service, especially in that time of need that so many people find themselves in. So anyway, it's called the Aging and Disability Resource Connection, and I'd like to bring that to the attention of the PD and Fire and also the city as well, and make that a one-number, a one-number, one-stop shop for people in need. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Landau?
Okay, so it's been since before Christmas. I hope everybody had wonderful holidays, and I wish us all the best New Year. I went on a wetlands tour, which was amazing. I've never been in the wetlands and didn't realize what we had back there. And I also see that we do have challenges when it comes to public works and dealing with the water issues. So a lot of this stuff goes hand in hand, and we have to work together with the different groups. But the future plans for the wetlands are going to be amazing. So I encourage anybody, if there's any town halls coming up regarding the wetlands that you attended, I think you'll enjoy it. We also had a fentanyl town hall a couple weeks ago with a local resident, Perla Mendoza, along with Senator Nguyen. Chief Henderson was there, Mayor Kostarsik, Councilman Moore, Councilman Kalmak. It was well-attended, a lot of information given out about the dangers of fentanyl. They also gave out free samples of Narcan, which I think was very much appreciated. You'll never know when you're going to need it. Also, thank you, Public Works, for your open house. That was a great presentation, very informative. It was great to see that was open to the public. I wish more of the public would have come, but you guys did a great job on that. Also, I would like to address the resident that was assaulted. I just want to point out that she reached out to me, and I reached out to Chief Henderson, and he immediately reached out to her, talked to her about what happened, her concerns. And so I appreciate you being open to discussing her suggestions for, you know, homelessness and what happened and the approach that we could take. So thank you very much for following up with her so quickly. Let's see. And then also, I took, you know, quite a few notes during public comments, and I would like to discuss the residents' concerns with staff. So I will be preparing an email with all of my notes from all the various residents that spoke on their concerns, and I would like to be able to discuss that so we can come back at the next meeting and, you know, give them some answers to their concerns. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I also attended the fentanyl presentation presented by Perla Mendoza and State Senator Janet Nguyen, thanking them for putting that good educational meeting for all of our residents. I attended a Planning Commission meeting. I attended a Cal City Speaker Series meeting. I attended a Rossmore Community Services District Traffic Study Town Hall. They're presently doing a survey of Rossmore residents for their opinion on the proposals put forward by county Public Works to help with their traffic, and they're going to see what the residents think of the alternatives they put forward, whether they like them or not. I attended two Orange County Sanitation Board meetings. The last one, I, we went on a tour of their new, almost-finished administration building. They're building a large two-story building across Ellis from the sanitation district. It's, it's really kind of so that they have a spot, so if they need to rebuild some of their infrastructure in the future, they have places to build things and then tear something down, build something else. So it's a, it's a beautiful building. It's expected to be done maybe in late March, early, this spring, anyway. And it is lead gold and got a lot of architecture and environmental-type things in it. So it was very, it was a very nice tour, and they still have to put in parking lots and paint walls and do things like that, but it'll be nice to be able to be inside and enjoy that, so. I also attended the Proposition 218 Open House. I want to thank Iris Lee and Catherine Cho. I'd also like to thank Derek Escavito, who gave us all kinds of information on water, and I enjoyed it very much. I thank Derek and Sean Sabo for their, all their information that they were happy to share with the residents. So hopefully, I didn't get too much down to the numbers end, but I hope the residents also had their questions answered. So thank you for doing that. And I think that, I think that's it. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. Items on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and are acted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed by council members. I will call for a second and a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, with the exception of Items E and M.
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And can you please vote on your iPads?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, 5-0. And let's see, we now will hold, let's see, Item E. And do City Manager, do you have a staff report?
We have no additional staff report summary, other than the fact that this is a quarterly report that we provide to you of any and all contracts that either myself or any department head has signed under their respective authority for projects that are within our budget limitations. So with that, we're happy to address any questions.
Okay. Did you have any particular questions or?
So I was just wanting to get a little bit more information because I've gotten quite a few emails and phone calls from residents regarding the Tripeppy contract. I just want to be a little bit more transparent, just give them a little bit more information about this. So I've got a couple of questions for you, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. Did we get quotes from other social media companies?
We did not, and they're technically not a social media company. They do provide social media outreach and support for agencies. That's one of their responsibilities and one of their expertise areas, but for us, they're generally working with us on general community outreach as a result of all the projects that we've got going. I think it also bears, repeating that City Hall in and of itself was the only part of our city that was not active on social media and primarily our city that was not active on social media, and primarily that's a result of the fact that we just don't have the capacity to be able to hire someone. The Police Department, as all of you know, does a phenomenal job with their outreach. They have an officer that focuses time specifically on social media. They have a full-time police lieutenant that focuses on their public outreach, but the city in and of itself did not have someone to help assist us with outreach. As you'll note in the strategic plan, a lot of those objectives that you've set for us require, and you've asked for specifically, community outreach, and a lot of the criticisms that I've heard from each of you actually are complaints from residents that they don't know about things. You heard a comment tonight about more transparency and not knowing that the city was undertaking a water and sewer rate update, and yet we've done several different efforts to try to get that message out for the past several months. So those are primarily the efforts that they're helping us with. The bi-weekly newsletter that's coming out of my office, that was another area that we've been focusing on to push messaging out to the community in terms of updates and meetings and projects and those types of things. It's up on our website, but unless people are utilizing our website, they don't know it's there. And some of you have helped us try to push that out on social media, so the, working with us, we got set up on a platform so that now people can sign up for it. They're working with us just on a bi-weekly basis on trying to really step up our outreach component. So that's just in general what they're working with us on. This is not someone that we're paying to sit behind a computer and do updates on social media. It goes far above and beyond that, in addition to helping us set policies in terms of marketing and branding and those sorts of things. This is a limited-term contract, just for the rest of this fiscal year, and we'll make a determination during the budget process based on the work effort that they've set up for us, if it's something that we recommend to continue in the next budget cycle.
Okay, so it sounds like it's more than social media, because this-
It absolutely is.
Okay, because it sounds like the, the primary business model for this company is ballot initiatives, so it's going above and beyond social media, because the $40,000 is a, seems a little steep. We could just borrow somebody from the PD.
Well, we actually, we actually can't. I mean, we're limited in terms of, of their capacity and what our expertise is, and needing the expertise and support. And again, you've set parameters for us through the strategic plan process that you want more community outreach, and we need the help to be able to do that, to not only do it, but to do it right, so that we get the community to participate with us.
I guess my, my final concern is, is that this contract is up April?
So it's a six-month, not to exceed six-month term.
Okay, so then at the end of six months, because we've already exhausted our budget for this, for social media, community outreach, who's going to run it?
Well, if we recommend that we, we need to continue utilizing their support moving forward, then we need to come back to you, because then I've, I've already reached max capacity in terms of my contract authority, in terms of budget limitation.
Okay, so you'll come back to us at that point?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we've got Item M.
We could just get a motion and a second to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Can we get a motion and a second to approve Item E?
I'll make motion. I move.
Second.
Okay, and please vote. Okay, that passes five, zero. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Item M, application for grant funds for the Orange County Community Resources, Orange County Housing and Community Public Facilities Improvement Grant. Do we have a-
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll turn this item over to our Community Development Director, Alexa Smithel. Alexa?
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this application just a little bit. This was a joint effort with our Public Works Department and also in concert with the County of Orange. This grant opportunity is to leverage federal community development block grants to invest in the North Seal Beach Community Center. The city has partnered with the county on other CDBG projects for many years, and those projects have all been bathroom renovations focused primarily in Leisure World. So we know that we have a community there in Leisure World that has made great use of CDBG funds in the past, and that's one of the reasons that the county is hoping to be able to work with us on this. This is a different type of funding. The CDBG program is quite large at the federal level, so the funds that we're applying for are project funds, they're facility funds, they're not service funds like we use for our bathroom renovation program. So it's, it's a little bit different in scope. The North Seal Beach Community Center is home to our Meals on Wheels program that the city funds. It also contains a bunch of senior programming, many of which are free opportunities that we provide to our senior residents. It has recreation programming, and it's the meeting space for several of our local nonprofits as well. The center itself is dated, an assessment of facilities was done in 2011, and that assessment identified the need for investment in the center particularly related to accessibility. These grant programs, these grant funds match very well with that to improve accessibility and also to improve energy efficiency within the facility. So in, in combination with Public Works, we've come up with, with a scope of work for this project that we think is very beneficial to the community, to open it up for more people to use. And as I mentioned, this community, this facility serves some of our more low-resourced community members, particularly related to the Meals on Wheels program. What's being asked of you this evening is to approve a submittal of the grant application, and if we receive the funding to, to be able to take that in. The timeline for the county, they will announce awardees in April, so by the time we, you know, kind of get, get the paperwork done and do some preliminary work on our end, particularly for Public Works and scoping, it will be next fiscal year by the time we receive these funds. So we're hoping that by that time, we'll be able to work through the match. So that's the important piece. The, the funding is $350,000 that's been made available. We do need to come up with a 20% match, but that's excellent leverage of funds for, for this facility that really needs the investment and serves a community that, that really needs the space. So we're getting a $420,000, $400,000, $420,000 project at the cost of $70,000 to the city, which we're, we're very excited about and very hopeful about this grant. So we're hoping that you'll approve submittal of these funds.
Thank you for that.
If I may?
Sure.
Yeah, the reason I pulled this is because it, it is, especially for my neighbors in Leisure World, especially in this economy, and is, and the, the cost of feeding ourselves is, is brutal when we go to the grocery store, and the Meals on Wheels program is vital to quite a few of my neighbors. And I know that that's been the home for that, and there are other programs that touch my community, too. And being on the Senior Citizen Visory Council as well, this is something that pings well with me. The, the Meals on Wheels aspect of this is, is particularly touching for me. So we have neighbors in Leisure World who are hurting. They are senior citizens, they're getting older, they are living on a fixed income, sometimes they're underwater, and all the costs around them in Leisure World have been going up. The GRF Foundation dues have gone up, their mutual dues have gone up. You go to the grocery store and you see some of our neighbors standing there looking at coupons and how to feed themselves with the few dollars they have left over. So Meals on Wheels is vital to a lot of people, a lot of my neighbors. And so I am dedicating my discretionary money, because I can't spend discretionary monies, the $20,000 discretionary money that I have on programs inside Leisure World, because it's private property, I'm going to dedicate this year's $20,000 to this program right here. So that's part of our 70 right there. I encourage anybody else to-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, can I get a-
I'll make the motion.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and please vote on your iPads.
Yes.
And that passes five, zero. Thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to a public hearing. This is an amendment to cost recovery schedule to amend dog licensing fees, and amendment to administrative penalty schedule to add a penalty amount for noncompliance with dog licensing requirements. I'd like to call on Captain Nicholas, please.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Hello, hello. Yosa first would like to wish you a Happy New Year. Very adorable. Good evening, Mayor Sastarsik, City Councilmember, City Manager Ingram, city staff. I'm here tonight to provide an update on our in-house animal control program and make recommendations to update the current cost recovery schedule as it pertains to dog licenses and the penalty schedule for noncompliance with dog license requirements. Chief Bailey, I might need you here. All right, thanks. Appreciate it, sir. Okay, so a little reminder as a quick background. The City of Seal Beach maintained an in-house animal control program until 2004, when it was dissolved on a recommendation from a comprehensive police services study. At that time, the City of Seal Beach contracted with Long Beach to provide animal control services. And then fast forward to 2021, the City of Long Beach notified Seal Beach of impending cost increases to provide animal control services, and that prompted us to review animal control services and review the Long Beach contract. And then, as you know, we did a comprehensive assessment of animal control services, as well as explored other options. And ultimately, in May of 2022, several options were presented by city staff to the city council, and it was the city council's direction to bring animal control back to Seal Beach. And then this last July, July 1st, Seal Beach brought animal control back in-house, and we've been successfully running the program since then. Slides, sir, thank you. Reviewing and updating dog license fees is a vital step in ensuring the sustainability of our animal control program. While the primary goal of this program is to safeguard the health and welfare of our community members, it is essential to recognize that all programs, no matter how noble the purpose, come with associated costs to the city. Although the program is subsidized by the General Fund, ensuring adequate fees partially alleviates the fiscal strain and makes the programs more self-sustaining, ultimately allowing us to continue to provide the high-quality animal control services that our community depends on. Furthermore, the adjustment in dog licensing fees are essential to keep pace with the evolving needs of our community. As in the case with any new program, the demands on animal control services have grown, necessitating more resources, staff, and technology to maintain and enhance the program's effectiveness. By increasing these fees, we can invest in advanced training and equipment, thus ensuring the safety of our residents and the welfare of our animals. This progressive approach will enable us to better respond to emerging challenges and involve evolving expectations, making our animal control program more resilient and adaptive. Lastly, the updated dog license fees underscores the principle of shared responsibility. While the program serves the collective welfare of our community, it's only fair that those who directly benefit from these services contribute their financial support. These fees represent an equitable way to distribute the program's costs amongst those who utilize the resources the most, alleviating the financial burden on the General Fund and promoting fiscal responsibility. By sharing the costs, we strengthen our community's commitment to animal welfare, demonstrating that we all play a pivotal role in maintaining a safe and a harmonious environment. Additionally, pursuant to the Seal Beach Municipal Code Section 1.15.015, staff is recommending that the city council amend the penalty schedule and include a $112 administrative penalty for failure to comply with city dog licensing requirements. This is done with the goal of achieving better compliance. In order to help determine the most appropriate fees, in addition to reviewing the city's own costs of providing these services, a survey of several nearby cities was conducted. The city worked in partnership with Clear Source Financial Consulting, which reviewed the fee analysis. Clear Source has most recently assisted the city with cost of services and fee studies. The cities that we surveyed are displayed on the screen in front of you. And please note that the cities with an asterisk are the comparable cities designated by the Seal Beach City Council. As a result of this survey, we discovered that Seal Beach charges significantly less for dog licensing fees. The chart on the screen illustrates the current and proposed fees, which are based on our research and conversation with industry professionals. This chart shows the rates that the surveyed cities charged for various dog licenses, including unaltered, that is, dogs that have not been spayed or neutered, altered, that's dogs that have been fixed, senior unaltered, senior altered, service animal, late fee, transfer fee, replacement tag, and noncompliance citation. And if you'll notice on this slide, we did not have any mechanisms for which to recover costs associated with late fees, transfer fees, replacement tag fees, or noncompliance fees. And you also notice that our proposed fees fall well in line of the average of most other cities. Some charge upwards of $160 for the most expensed non-citizen, I'm sorry, non-senior unaltered fee, and we're proposing just a slight increase. Slide, please. Thank you. Based on this information, staff is recommending the proposed fees. You will notice on this chart that our recommendation is that the fees increase between 22 and 26%. This equates to an increase of anywhere between just $4 and $28 from existing fees, with the largest increase being for non-seniored unaltered fees. We are recommending license, transfer, and replacement tag fees of $10 to help offset the cost of the physical tags which we purchase via Pet Data. The late fees aim to encourage residents to renew their dog licenses on time and to gain compliance with regulations. And lastly, the noncompliance citation is designed to ensure that people register their dogs and prevent Scoff law violations. First, let us look at how many dog licenses were purchased in 2022, and the data that I have was provided by the City of Long Beach. In total, for fiscal year 2000, I'm sorry, for calendar year 2022, a total of 1,455 dog licenses were sold, the vast majority of those being senior altered dog licenses, with only a handful of unaltered license, only 38 unaltered dog licenses were sold in During fiscal year 2122, the City of Seal Beach received $67,074 in animal license fees, and with an average of a 25% increase, we can forecast revenues of $83,843 for the first full fiscal year if these updates are implemented. That results in an estimated approximate fiscal impact of $16,769 per year. Although this, although this does not come near exceeding the city's costs of providing animal control services, it will assist us in helping to offset costs and fees associated with our designated pet licensing provider, Pet Data. I also want to emphasize that we are not recommending these fees solely for the purpose of generating revenue. Other cities have fees for surrendering animals. However, we believe that an animal surrender fee would dissuade people from safely surrendering animals, as we have heard of people abandoning unwanted pets on the side of roadways or in lots. Our overall goal with our animal control program is the health and welfare of the community and all of the animals in Seal Beach. In conclusion, raising dog license fees is a crucial step toward enhancing our community's animal control efforts. This increase is not merely a financial adjustment, but a strategic move towards responsible pet ownership and public safety. Higher fees will enable us to invest in more efficient animal control measures, such as providing tracking of pets, which is essential for quickly reuniting dogs, lost dogs with their owners, and reducing the number of stray animals on our streets. Additionally, these funds will help us to educate the public on responsible pet ownership and enforce animal control laws more effectively, thereby ensuring a safer and more harmonious coexistence between pets and the community. This measure is not about penalizing pet owners, rather, it's an investment in the well-being of our pets and the safety of the community. And although this concludes my present, presentation on the cost recovery schedule, I'll be back in a few moments to discuss recommended municipal code changes under new business. However, I am happy to answer any questions related to dog licensing fees.
Were there any questions?
I might have missed it, so if I did, I'm sorry. Do we have an idea from Long Beach how many people typically don't comply?
That's an excellent question, Mayor Protim Lando. Thank you for asking that. I don't know, and, and it's impossible to say how many people don't license their pets. I would, I would guess it's probably a pretty large- I would, I would guess it's probably a pretty large number of Seal Beach residents that don't license their dogs, but there's no way for us to know how many dogs are in Seal Beach. If I were to guess, Long Beach tells us that we sold 1,455 dog licenses in 2022, I'd guess that there's more than 1,400 dogs in Seal Beach, assuming that we have 25,000 residents, but we don't have a true accurate accounting of how many dogs are unlicensed. However, with these um, updated fees and the proposed municipal code changes that staff is recommending, we hope to gain greater compliance, um, along with our messaging efforts now that Seal Beach uh, has animal control back in-house to help gain more compliance and ultimately have more dogs licensed.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, uh, you talked about surrender. Are our animal control guys, are they involved with the surrender process for for citizens? Can they call up animal control, for example, and have and surrender their dog to them?
Uh, yes, Councilman Seal, thank you for asking that question. So fortunately, we don't see it all that often. However, um, today we actually did get um, a call from, I think it was either today or earlier this week, from a person who is experiencing homelessness, saying that they were no longer able to um, care for their their pet dog. And uh, they wanted to surrender uh, their pet in a safe environment. So they did call us, and we were able to meet with that person and then take that dog, and then we took the dog over to um, Wags for adoption.
Yeah, I'm sure that was a sad day for that person too, but uh, there's no fee involved in that for that person.
No, as it is right now, there's no fee, and that's by design. We don't want to charge people for surrendering their animals for fear that they would just, you know, toss the dog on the side of the freeway or something like that, rather than giving it up for adoption.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? I did have a question, what what was the transfer fee again?
Oh, okay, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Sastarsik. So the transfer fee is if um, you own a dog right now, and let's say you're moving out of state, or you're going to give it to a family member, um, you will no longer be the owner of that dog. So the fee, I believe we recommend it'd be $10, is to transfer that fee to another person, maybe a family member or a friend or something like that.
Uh, my other question is, I'm sure that there are more dogs with 25,000 people. I'm sure there's more dogs than 1,400 in Seal Beach. Uh, but we're we're collecting, at this time, we're collecting information from residents as we start our program, and so they can go to uh, a website, and I'm forgetting what the name is, but um, and and register their dog with, their dog information with with PD right now.
Yes, thank you so much for reminding me about that. So right now, we don't have a mechanism to um, register the dogs, and part of that is making sure that our fees and municipal codes align with the industry best practices. That's why I'm here before you um, tonight with these recommendations. However, in the meantime, what we are doing is we have a portal that's on our city website, sealbeachpd.com, and if you click on the animal information, there's a portal where pers, people can input um, their their name, address, their dog's name, um, dog's birthday, type of dog, and we collect that information in a form. So once we are ready to go live with our pet licensing, then we can message that and direct them to uh, the Pet Data website so that they can complete their license.
Okay, and so there's going to be a little gap, a little gap or a little time here in doing a transition. We're, we're not going to be penalizing people with late fees while this whole process is taking place, is that correct?
Right, absolutely not. And um, I'll touch on this in my, in my subsequent presentation, but currently, dog licenses expire um, on December 31st of each year. So technically, nobody has a dog license in Seal Beach right now, but we're allowing a grace period until, because this is a new program, we can sort that out. So under no circumstances would we um, charge anybody a late fee or penalize them for failure to register the dog when we don't have a mechanism for which they can do it right now. Um, our idea is to charge late fees after the first full year of um, of the dog license. So for instance, if uh, somebody registers their dog this March 1st, and then uh, you know, February, the end of February, next year comes along, they don't register their dog, then after a period of time, they'd be charged the late fee.
So if you want to make sure that you're not charged for being non-compliant, getting your information in would be a good uh, preventative step or whatever?
Well, we certainly be happy to take people's information, and we want to know about every dog that's in town. That's a kind of a health and welfare um, issue, but we won't be charging anybody late fees until we can get this, this ball rolling and the program truly off the ground. And really, the last step in um, finalizing our in-house animal control program is the fee schedule and updating the municipal code. So we're, we're almost 100%.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more question, um, so regarding the homeless, um, I know in LA, I just saw something that PD and even animal control can't even do anything, even if it's an aggressive dog. So with our homeless, um, you know, one, are they having to pay fees? And and then two, if we do have an aggressive dog, are we able to address it?
Sure, well, whenever I talk about homelessness, I want to remind the community that homelessness is not a crime, although there are certain quality of life issues associated with with homelessness. I say that as as often as I can. In terms of um, dogs, there are laws that allow us to um, take certain aggressive dogs, especially if we suspect them of being sick, or they bite somebody, we can quarantine them. It doesn't matter if the owner of that dog is um, experiencing homelessness, or they're a citizen of Seal Beach or or housed, it doesn't make any difference to us. We treat people the same whether or not they live in a house, um, or have a fixed residence or not. So um, we can certainly protect animals, and we can protect the community regardless of somebody's homeless or not.
Do they have to pay fees?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, again, yes, in in theory, yes, they would have to pay a fee to license their dog, but um, I think we can all understand that if somebody's struggling to put food in their belly, we're, we're not going to penalize them for failing to register their dog license.
That's kind of what I was getting at. So we do give them some deference?
Uh, yes, it'd also be difficult to, uh, you know, if if somebody is experiencing homelessness, they might not have a permanent address, so couldn't necessarily say they are a resident of Seal Beach uh, to license their dog here.
Perfect, thank you.
I have the last one. I have another question, sorry, Captain.
Uh, no worries, sir.
Uh, Leisure World requires residents to have their dogs registered and with Long Beach in the years past and with our office in uh, security office, I believe. And there's, we're in this gap period right now, and I'm actually, actually talked to somebody who's got a dog that needs a license, and they don't have the license, and they need to to register with uh, the, with Golden Rain. So if you could reach out to me, and we can reach out to them to get this gap covered, so they understand what's happening on the license front, because nobody has licenses right now. And so, I mean, they need to be cognizant of what's going on here, so if we can work together on that, that'd be great.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We've uh, messaged that to Ruth Osborne with the Leisure World News, and I believe she's, she's published this, although it probably would be a good idea to put a refresher in the Leisure World paper. And I'd say on average, we get, you know, one or two emails um, a week, or phone calls from Leisure World residents, saying that, hey, we just got a dog, or I got a new dog, or I need to register my dog with the, with the GRF, can you help us? And our animal control officers reach out to them and let them know. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any more discussion from council? No? Okay, then uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and if you can vote, please? Okay, that carries 5-0. Now we'll move on, uh, no unfinished or continued business, we'll move on to new business, and we'll call back, we'll go. Nicholas back. Uh, this is an ordinance to amend the Seal Beach Municipal Code regarding animal control regulations relating to dog licensing, rabies control, and other animal control requirements and provisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for having me up here again, I appreciate it. So now I'm here to discuss proposed amendments to the Seal Beach Municipal Code as it relates to animal control regulations. So again, as I touched, we've been uh, doing animal control services for a few months now, and I believe we've delivered a high level of service to our community. And during this time, we've realized that um, there should be some updates to our Seal Beach Municipal Code that clarifies dog licensing, rabies control, and other animal control regulations. Our commitment to ensuring the safety and welfare of both our residents and local wildlife has revealed the necessary, uh, the necessity for revised regulations, and these proposed amendments aim not only to address emerging concerns, but also to better align our practices with the industry standards um, and best practices. Slide, please. These proposed updates are critical to the successful operation of the Seal Beach Animal Control Program. Licensing dogs is an essential practice that significantly contributes to the well-being of both pets and their owners. It's estimated that approximately one out of every three pets will become lost at some point during their lifetime. Even the most responsible pet owners can find themselves unexpectedly separated from their beloved companions due to unforeseen circumstances. Unpredictable accidents, such as a pet becoming frightened by fireworks or slipping through an open door, can lead to their disappearance. Without proper pet identification, a staggering 90% of lost pets may never be reunited with their owners. Speaking uh, from somebody who loves this dog more than anything in the whole world, I'm totally devastated. Uh, dog licenses play a crucial role in increasing the likelihood of reuniting owners with their pets, providing peace of mind in case of such unfortunate events. In addition to serving as a means of identification, a dog license offers several other invaluable benefits. It acts as proof that the pet has been vaccinated against rabies, thus ensuring the safety of the community. This not only protects other animals and people, but also minimizes the risk of disease transmission. Licensing a pet establishes ownership, which can be crucial in preventing fines associated with non-compliance by regulations. And by adhering to licensing requirements, pet owners not only safeguard their pet's health, but also their own financial well-being. Moreover, licensing pets promotes responsible dog ownership. The increased likelihood of being reunited with a lost pet means that animal control and shelters have more time and resources to focus on caring for and finding home for other animals' needs. This practice not only enhances the chances of lost pets returning to their home, but also helps to streamline the efforts of animal control services, ultimately leading to more efficient and humane management of stray and abandoned animals. Dog licensing is not only a smart and compassionate choice, but also a way to strengthen the bonds between pet owners and their companions while benefiting the broader community. During the years that Seal Beach was contracted with the city of Long Beach for animal control services, Long Beach handled all licenses for dogs in Seal Beach. However, as we've brought this function back in-house and contracted with Pet Data as our designated licensing partner, we have identified some recommendations that will help align us with industry best practices. First, under our current municipal code, dog licenses expire on December 31st of each year. That means if someone purchases a dog license in November, they're only buying a license valid until the end of the calendar year with no option for prorating costs. Our recommendation is that dog licenses expire one year from the date of purchase. This will encourage more people to license their dogs and make it easier to ensure there is no lapse in license coverage. We're also suggesting some language changes, such as converting the term seeing eye dog to service dog, to become more inclusive of working dogs, and also making an exception for police dogs. Additionally, uh, providing a provision for collecting late fees, prohibiting false or stolen documents, and the requirement to display rabies license on demand of an animal control officer. Office, um, other regulations include that the dog must wear their license tag when in public. Next slide, please. In addition, the proposed ordinance would update the city's rabies control regulations to align with similar, similar regulations that exist at the county level. Specifically, dogs must be vaccinated against rabies and are subject to quarantine if diagnosed with rabies. Orange County is designated as a rabies area per the State Director of Health. We are recommending changes to further our efforts to help stop the spread of rabies. This language includes that the vaccine be given by a licensed veterinarian approved by the California Department of Health, and includes a provision for deferment. It also empowers animal control officers to quarantine suspected rabid animals in the interest of protecting the community and prohibits anyone from disobeying a valid quarantine order. It adds a duty to report any suspected rabid animal to an animal control officer and requires that veterinarians provide a copy of the rabies vaccine certificate to the city of Seal Beach for records retention. While reviewing our current municipal code related to animal control, we discovered other language that we believe needs updating. Some of these are very minor, such as adding language that defines an animal control officer. Uh, there are other regulations we're suggesting require that a person holding a dog's leash in public be competent to restrain the dog. And these suggestions would also prohibit feeding of non-domesticated animals, not just birds. If you're not aware, the municipal code only says that you cannot feed wild birds, but doesn't make mention of any other type of wild animal. It would prohibit dogs on school property, except for service dogs and dogs invited by the school administration. And we do get complaints from the God administration about dogs being on the field and leaving their droppings on the field, which of course interferes with children's ability to have resource. And finally, the ordinance would prohibit animals on city beaches, including the jetty, with certain exceptions for service dogs or dogs engaged in official duties. The proposed amendments to the Seal Beach Municipal Code are vital for aligning the newly established animal control program with industry standards and best practices. These changes are not just administrative adjustments, they represent a significant step towards ensuring the health and welfare of both the community and its animal population. By adopting these modifications, Seal Beach will be able to offer a more efficient, humane, and effective animal control service. This alignment with recognized best practices will not only enhance the quality of care provided to animals, but also strengthen public safety, address community concerns more effectively, and ensure that animal welfare is maintained at the highest standards. Ultimately, these changes are essential for fostering a more responsible and compassionate relationship between humans and the animals in Seal Beach. Now, this concludes my second presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Are there any questions? Joe?
Including the pier along with beach and jetty?
Uh, yes, correct. Uh, Councilman Kelmick, the pier actually was already in our municipal code, we'll keep that as it is, but um, according to our animal control officers and officers, we've encountered animals that have been on the jetty, and we've gotten some pushback from community members because they don't believe that the jetty is the beach. We think that the jetty is part of the beach, but now there'll be no debate um, if this does get passed, because it will list it in the municipal code.
Questions?
I just wanted to clarify, did I hear you right, um, that we have to have proof of the rabies shot on demand?
So you you don't have to have it, uh, thank you for the question, you don't have to actually have it on your person at any time the dog's out in public. But in the event that an animal control officer responds to a dog bite, or for some reason believes that the animal might be displaying signs or symptoms um, similar to a dog that might be suffering from rabies, this provision would allow us to demand from the resident a copy of the most recent rabies vaccine certificate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, may I make one comment?
Sure.
I recommend adding the word pier to Section 9.05.090 of the ordinance, in addition to um, jetty and city beach, just for clarification, if that is the council's intent.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good, okay, can I get a motion with the addition that we uh, put here in the appropriate place?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, that carries 5-0.
Madam Mayor, so that uh, motion introduces for first reading Ordinance 1708 and Ordinance of the City of Seal Beach amending the Seal Beach Municipal Code to amend certain animal control regulations relating to dog licensing, rabies control, and other animal control requirements and prohibitions.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to adjournment. Tonight's meeting will be adjourned in memory of former Seal Beach Police Chief Joe Stilenovitch. On behalf of the city of Seal Beach, we extend our deepest condolences, our thoughts and prayers to the Stilenovitch family and friends. Adjourn the city council in memory of former, okay, that's the same thing. Our next meeting will adjourn to Monday, February 12th, 2024, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you very much, and good night.
Deemed necessary.